As is our tradition, Madam Chair, at the work session in March, the Superintendent presents the proposed fiscal year 2020/21 budget. And as I have introduced each budget during my six years here, we begin with our vision statement. Moore County Schools will ensure that educational experiences inspire students to reach their full potential and leave productive lives in an ever-changing world. And our mission, which is Moore County Schools creates a supportive, engaging, and safe learning environment that builds knowledge, skills, and abilities needed for future success. We are mindful of our core beliefs, that we believe successful schools are essential for thriving communities, and that every student can learn and succeed regardless of their socioeconomic status, race, and ethnicity. That all staff are empowered to meet the diverse learning needs for our students. That resources are provided so students and staff of all backgrounds and abilities can be successful. That students should come to school and feel safe, secure, and cared for. That we are a partnership with students, parents, and the community. And finally, that we are accountable for the education of our students. As I've said before, the budget is nothing more than the monetary expression of the vision, the mission, and the core beliefs. And I invite you to evaluate the budget that we're going to present at this time in that context. It begins with the summary of our identified needs. And as a segue to Mr. Cox, who I'll defer to for the bulk of our presentation, and I'll add in from time to time, but he'll manage most of it this year. Last month, Mr. Cox provided you a detailed presentation of our needs. That was not the budget. A month ago was a presentation of our priority needs. This chart summarizes those needs and focuses only on next year. So as a board, you have already evaluated what our needs are over the next five years, and you've evaluated the totality of those needs in the context of your vision, mission, and core beliefs. So in the past, we have repeated that, but we're not doing that this year. We're going to simply refresh your memory that we did involve your engagement with those needs last month. Start with this summary of what that total value was of those needs. And then we're going to take a little bit different approach this year to how we have framed the budget. And I think Mr. Cox is going to do a very good job of explaining how we lay that out. So at this time, Andrew Cox.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you see here, just as a reminder, the identified needs that we presented last month to you broken down by strategic plan domain. As you see, domain one, academic achievement. Domain two, student safety, health, and welfare. Domain three, employee culture and capacity. Domain four, parent and community engagement. And domain five, organizational capacity and efficiency. Between those five domains, we have a total need of $3.9 million, $3,957,500. And again, these are needs, these are not proposed budget. These are the needs that we identified for next year. What we have done, we have further broken down those needs into fixed costs and other identified cost needs. So first, I'd like to walk through the fixed cost items. And just as a reminder what a fixed cost is, there are things that either have to happen through a mandate from the state, something written in general statute that has to happen, or an item that is a directive or something that the board would like for us to put in or into the budget. So the first item you see here is add six teachers for the K-3 class size reduction mandate from the state. We actually need 13 teachers for this. However, based on ADM projections, we anticipate the state to give us seven of those teachers, which leave remaining six teachers that we need from local funds to be able to meet the state mandate to be in compliance with class size for kindergarten through third grade. You see there, $70,000, six teachers at $70,000. You may say, well, $70,000 is not what a teacher gets. You're correct. What this includes is it includes the salary of the teacher, the FICA, retirement, hospitalization, and any other benefits associated with what the employer has to pay for that employee. So that's where we come up with the $70,000, which is essentially the same dollar amount that the state gives us for a state allotted teacher.
And if I might, Mr. Cox. Board members, you'll recall that in the past, we've used $60,000 as the fully loaded cost for each full-time equivalent teaching position. One of the benefits we have with Mr. Cox joining us with his many years of experience at NCDPI has been that he knows that the state uses $70,000. We probably should have been using $70,000 all along. This is a true cost comparison compared to what we have used in the past. So this is not a decision that we've made arbitrarily, but rather one that aligns our budgeting practices with the state's actual allocation of dollars.
Andrew, I had a question on the charter school thing. And this figure is different than the one that we had seen previously. How do you determine, do you take like the 150 students and divide it into that amount of money?
Let's go ahead and let him introduce that line. And he might answer your question, Mr. Dennison. If not, we'll refine it.
Yep, so the next item is the charter school increase of estimated 150 students. We're anticipating enrollments at the charter school to increase next year, 150 students. By general statute, we are required to pay the charter school, each charter school, a per pupil share of the amount of money that the county gives us. And to answer your question, Mr. Dennison, we do take the total number of students for Moore County, which includes Moore County Public Schools. Each student that is in the charter school, and in any charter school that the student will reside in Moore County. The charter school does not have to be in Moore County, but as long as that student resides in Moore County and is eligible to attend Moore County schools, that is factored into the total number. We then take that and divide by the money that the county gives us to come up with that per pupil amount. And so at the number that we're going to recommend for budgeting purposes, that 150 students would equate to additional $550,000 to the charter schools next year. And that's just the additional monies. We're estimating, as you'll see later in the presentation, the total amount that we will be paying to the charter schools in 2021 will be about $2.8 million.
Thanks.
The next line item you see is the state salary increase for locally paid employees. As you're aware, we have quite a few locally paid employees. When the state gives a raise in the budget, we also give that same type of raise and benefit increase to our locally paid employees. Next year, or this year is actually an election year. And based on history, we have seen that during election years, raises for teachers and classified staff have typically been a little bit higher than non-election years. Without a budget being passed and a raise for certified staff or classified staff this year, we're anticipating a little higher percentage. And we're estimating 6% for certified and 2% for classified. And that is a cost of $660,000 for our locally paid employees. The next item you'll see there is the local supplement increases for our certified staff. We have a local salary schedule that gives a supplement to our certified staff. What this does, it allows us to increase a step on that supplement scale for those certified employees each year at a cost of $300,000. The next item you see there is adding one teacher for orchestra in the Northmore area. Based on feedback that the board received from the community during the student reassignment plan, main continuity among curriculums, students that may be transferring to Northmore where they were currently in an orchestra program now wouldn't have it going to Northmore. So the board asked us to put that item back into the budget to have orchestra program for the Northernmore area. And for one teacher for that would be a $70,000 cost. And then the last item for the fixed cost items is a school business system modernization mandate. The state has mandated that all LEAs, all school districts, implement new financial and human resources systems. And they've gone through an RFP process and identified two vendors that we can choose from. That will take place over several years. However, our current vendor, the current system that we have, saw the price of the new modern systems and has increased their price to match those modern systems for our current system that we have. And so that cost is going to be increasing starting July 1, without that system being a modern system, which they call it the Modernization Project. So that is a fixed cost that is going to have to happen regardless. And all these are annual costs. So when you see there, you have fixed cost total of $2,050,000.
Any questions, board members, on the fixed cost increases?
Is the modernization mandate, is that $50,000 standard for every school system? Or is that a prorated amount based on tiers or?
So each vendor chooses how they charge. Our current vendor is implementing the same scale that the new vendors are, which is a per cost, as a cost per ADM. Their previous structure was not set as a cost per ADM. It was just a straight dollar amount. And so when these new vendors that have the modern systems came out and did a cost per ADM projection or structure, they implemented that, which raised our cost by $50,000. So it'll vary between LEA based on the ADM that they have.
Now, will we see another increase the next year? Or is that a, this is a one-time, and we'll continue to pay at that level?
So it should increase $50,000 this year, and it should maintain that. We may see a slight increase from year to year, but that's with the ADM increasing. But it won't be a large increase to this level next year.
Mr. Cox, will it be fair to say that once we're clear as to the program that we're going to implement, that we'll enter into like a three-year contract with an annual rate that the board would approve that since it would exceed $50,000?
Yes, that is correct. We would enter into a contract. And as part of the RFP process that the state signed with the two vendors, the price is going to be set for five years. It can't raise for five years. And then, I don't remember what the percentage is, but it can only increase a certain percent for the next five, over the next five years. So they put some parameters in place so the cost wouldn't rise significantly after we go onto one of those two platforms.
So is the state paying for this, or are we paying for this?
So the state will pay for the migration of us to move to the new system. And they will, well, I say that, they're supposed to pay for us to migrate, and they're supposed to pay for the first year of the maintenance fee. However, right now, with the budget not being passed, no additional dollars were allocated to this project. So only the pilots that have selected that are in the process of going forward right now are able to move forward. However, that does not change this $50,000. Our current company has said, that's our price, and nothing's going to change that.
In order for them to accommodate their requirements under the modernization plan?
Well, they're not part of the modernization plan.
Okay, great. So while we wait, this is our price?
Yes, correct.
And once the plan is implemented, is there any chance that that price would go down if we switched vendors?
No, because this is the price, they've changed the price structure of the lowest price of the two vendors that we have to choose from.
Everybody understand that? It's an offer we can't refuse.
And I will, they have come out with a couple, our current vendor has come out with a couple of plans. I don't know the details of it yet, but if we sign a three- or five-year agreement, it may drop a few thousand dollars, but it will not drop significantly. Like I said, I don't know the detail of those plans yet. I need to look into those.
As we transition to the next slide, board members, I'll emphasize that what we are presenting to you on this slide is that you have a fixed cost increase of $2.05 million. Now, there could be some variability on the salary line. It could go down, it could go up. Remember that our state legislators and our governor know that our teachers have gone an entire year with no raise, and it's an election year. So I think Mr. Cox has been reasonable in projecting that the likelihood is that there will be a raise, and that it will be on the higher end compared to what we've seen in recent years. So we've got to be proactive about this. There will be plenty of other important needs that can be met after fixed cost increases. So if it's not quite this high, I would encourage you to consider a budget that keeps this amount as a fixed cost increase. If it ends up being a little rich, then you've got some extra money available then to maybe add a couple of teachers later on. You'll see that we're not going to be proposing enough money to put enough teachers back into this budget. But by no means are we recommending that we just wait until the state budget is approved and maybe go back to the county commissioners in the summer or the fall to ask and find out at that point if we have enough money to pay our locally funded teachers. I think that this is an amount of money that needs to be a fixed cost, even though later on, there'll be some discussion. And we'll have to confess that it's not locked in in the way that other fixed costs are. But surely, we would be irresponsible if we didn't plan for a salary increase of this nature from the state in the coming fiscal year. Any questions about the fixed cost projected budget?
Right, so the second breakdown category is of identified needs. First line item you see there, which we all know is important to all of us here, is to implement the classified salary schedule that was proposed last year. You heard from teachers and classified staff last month on the importance, and it's one of your legislative priorities. It's a cost of $850,000. The next item we have here is restore teachers for grades four and five, which classes increase, as you heard Dr. Locklear present, I believe it was last month. Those class sizes in the grades four through five have increased as a result of lower class sizes in K through three from the class size reduction mandate. So here you see one teacher at $70,000. And you may ask why there's different color here, and I'll get to that in a minute. I won't go into that just yet. The second, or the third item is maintain bridge-funded positions. We have five nurses, two counselors, and one psychologist currently paid out of Medicaid funding and impact aid funding. The Medicaid funding, we were asked to transition that to spend down some of the fund balance that we had from Medicaid reimbursements from the county. So we did that. Next year, we will be out of that money, and we will be, no longer be able to support those five nurses, two counselors, and one psychologist from that bridge funding, the gap funding, if you want to say. So this year, we're asking for half of that funding to start getting us there so we won't have to ask for the full amount next year. That's a cost of $237,500. The next item is to restore teachers again for grades four through five. And that's seven teachers at $70,000. That's a repeat of that second line item, which was one teacher. And I'll tell you why on the next slide when we get there. That's additional cost of $490,000.
Let me just clarify. We'll explain why we separated the two lines on the next slide.
We'll explain the red and why we separated the two lines on the next slide. Yes, sir. The next item you see here is add director for operations and human resources. It's not really adding a position. That position is there. It's a request to add funding for that position. As Mr. Dennison mentioned, Mr. Brath has done a really good job with managing the five major construction projects that we have going on right now. That has pretty much taken all its time, so he has needed some support to manage the operations of the district. So we have someone in doing that currently. And this is to provide funding for that position to maintain that, especially as long as these construction projects are ongoing, where we need additional support in the operations area, which will then transition over to support our HR area. We have increasing need for additional technology support. As you know, we have Chromebooks, laptops, and quite a few classrooms. And this is to increase the IT technician support for current operational demand. We have technicians that travel, and sometimes they can't respond as quickly as the schools would like. So adding another would help increase that operational demand or the service time that they have there at a cost of $60,000. A couple of years ago, our DIFs were cut. This is a request to restore one DIF that was cut in a prior year at a cost of $65,000.
And for the record, DIF is?
A district instructional facilitator.
Digital.
Digital, sorry, yes, sorry.
Digital integration.
Sorry.
Digital integration.
Facilitator, I got a facilitator.
One out of three, ain't that?
Right. All right. And then the last item is similar to the IT technician. It's actually IT media and tech assistant support. It was increasing by one FT at a cost of $35,000. Again, just make note that these costs do include the benefits that go along with the salaries there. So it's not the salary, specific salary for an individual there. The total running cost of the identified needs is $1,907,500.
And Mr. Cox, if you add $1,907,500 to $2,500,000 in fixed costs, that equals the identified needs that were presented on your very first slide. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so these two slides, these second two slides, provide you with a detailed breakout based on fixed costs and other needs. Any questions so far, board members?
I just had one observation. The only thing that I see different than last year is the orchestra teacher and the business system modernization. So these, our needs have not gone away from what we identified last year that we were not able to meet.
Thank you, Ms. Wallen-Miller. Very good observation. What is clear is that there are, the only new initiative that's represented here is bringing the Northmore schools back into equity in terms of the offering of orchestra, which was cut a few years ago when the number of students in Northmore dropped to a certain level. But now that new students are coming, the board has correctly directed the staff to include this in the budget. But even that does nothing more than bring us up to a base level of operations. There's nothing new here. There's no new money. This is the same money. There is no new money. It is the same money for current costs. If we don't meet these needs, then we drop below the expectations articulated in our mission, vision, and core beliefs. Any other questions?
So as we start transitioning to the proposed budget, you'll see here the summary of the recurring costs, as Dr. Grimacy mentioned. $2,500,000 in fixed costs. Other identified needs is $1,907,500 for a total identified need of $3,957,500. What we are estimating is county funding for current expense. And we'll get to how we determine that amount.
But you now know that, what the red is.
And I'll get to that, yep. That's what, yeah, so that's, yeah, so you know what the red is. So, yep, so estimated county funding is $2,976,382. So you have a shortfall of $981,118, which make up that $3,957,500. So as he said, that's what's in the red. The $981,000 make up the red from that previous slide. So those are things that we do not feel, we're not proposing to include in the budget based on the number that we feel is appropriate, reasonable request to the commissioners.
So to make it clear, the superintendent's proposed budget falls short of what the need is that's been identified by the board previously. So should there be criticism of that, that would be fair criticism. But there are reasons why Mr. Cox and I have decided to opt for a request that is below what our identified needs are. Mr. Cox?
So as you see here, here is a chart that breaks it down. It shows your identified needs of $3,957,500. On the left there, you see the estimated county funding of $2,976,382. So how do we come up with that estimated amount? In January, the county manager presented his projection for property tax increase, which was between 2% and 2.5% over the current budgeted amount.
Let me correct that. Property tax revenue increase. He did not propose property tax increase, but rather property tax revenue. So same tax rates, but a higher yield of revenue.
Yes, thank you for the clarification, yes. So he projected property tax revenues to increase by 2% to 2.5%. We have taken the lower amount, 2%, for part of this projection. He did not provide a projected increase in sales tax revenues. However, we've looked back at history over the last few years. We've talked with staff at the county, and we feel that 2% is a reasonable amount to project on increased sales tax revenues based on their historical increase in budgeted revenues for sales tax. So when you add the 2% of property tax revenue increase, the 2% for sales tax revenue increase, we come up with the $2,976,382 over prior budgeted amounts. So when you look at it, you see our fixed cost again of $2,500,000. To stay within that $2,976,000, we'll only be able to do $926,000 of that 1.9 million other identified needs. So you see that shortfall of $981,000. And again, I didn't mention this, that $2,976,382 is based on resolution that the county passed in 2016 to give the school system 40% of their budgeted property tax and sales tax revenues.
So the $2,976,382 does not represent all of the anticipated sales and property tax revenues for next year, but rather 40% of that. So we took the county's conservative estimates on sales and property tax growth, 2% each, and took 40% of that amount, which is the county's budget policy for allocation of revenues to the schools, and from that derived an amount that we used for budget purposes that would limit what our request would be. We self-governed on that. We chose to restrict what we're proposing to you to $2,976,382, which is admittedly $981,118,000 short of what our identified needs are. Any questions about that so far?
So we're just, we're holding them to the 40% resolution that we should be getting, no matter, anyhow, because they made it a resolution, correct?
Well, we're not suggesting that we're holding them. We're just, we're just, we needed a number. We needed a reasonable number by which to estimate. Their policy says 40%. Their policy allows for them to vote to waive that policy, and they have done that. In a couple of years, they have waived it and given us more than 40%. In each of those years, that was temporary funding, though. It was never reoccurring funding. And as Mr. Cox will show, that in those years where they exceeded the cap, then they reduced that in subsequent years, and we'll show you that. Last year, they waived the 40% policy and allocated 37.5%. Mr. Cox will also show that. So we're not presupposing anything. We just simply need reasonable standards. And so county staff has indicated that they feel as though it's reasonable that we operate with the most modest estimate, which is 2% growth in sales and property taxes. And beyond that, we just simply applied the county's own policy with the hope that at minimum, they would, they would hold to the 40% and perhaps not disappoint us and consider increasing that. But right now, we needed a rule to play by. And so in proposing the budget, we want you to understand what it was that was the basis of our estimate. And this is different than anything we've done before, so we understand the questions.
So basically?
So basically, we are trying to provide a budget that we feel will get approved within our forty percent threshold, and that does not include our items that we need um to really support our school operations, which were all of the items that were shown in the red on on our previous page. So we're talking about losing our nurses, we're talking about losing our extra teachers, uh again, we don't have them, but but we're not even gonna ask for them, and all of our other positions that we heard last month from our team, that those things were desperately needed. And so we are, and I know I'm, I I mean, it's um, it's just a hard pill to swallow.
Well, it it does illustrate the staff's efforts to self, you know, to impose within ourselves reasonable guidelines. But let let me just make sure, for the record, we clarify, we are not um, we are not suggesting that this year we will be cutting nurses and a psychologist or or counselors this year. There is adequate funding in the Medicaid reimbursement fund balance to cover fiscal year twenty twenty one. What Mr. Cox is saying is, is that this time next year, we'll need twice that amount-
Right.
-to save those positions.
Right.
And and given the uh challenge of of expanding our local funding from year to year, if it's difficult to put two hundred and thirty seven thousand into the budget, it will be doubly difficult, particularly if we're held to a forty percent cap-
Right.
-to get over five hundred thousand dollars for that purpose. So if we begin to build up our reoccurring spending now, we can have it. So you are correct, Ms. Thompson, in the long run, we would lose those positions uh in next year's budget presentation, but not this year. So Mr. Cox and I feel as though we can live with not doing that this year, as long as this time next year, i- if the same parameters are in place-
Forty percent.
Uh, then then perhaps we could do it, but we won't know that. But we have made some very difficult decisions in presenting this budget to you this year. We have made difficult decisions when we've presented this budget. Have we been too strict? Well, you're gonna find out from the public when it speaks to you at your public hearing next week, or you as board members can stand in judgment. Today's presentation, though, we wanna make clear to you, what, how, what, on what basis did we make those decisions? And then we'll humbly accept your your judgment as to whether or not we did that appropriately.
Right.
I understand the self-policing ourselves, but just looking at the list of things that are left in red, and knowing of things that are not even on the list, red or black, such as additional teachers in our uh sixth through twelfth grade area, which is where classes are grossly overcrowded. Um, it it's really hard to not wanna go ahead and put a few more things on this list so we can show how nicely we're self-policing uh by not asking for too much. But our our classrooms deserve the attention, they they deserve the extra teachers going in, and it's truly bothersome to realize that we're not even asking for anymore. And of course, we want everyone that could be possibly funded uh to to help with these class sizes.
Mr. Cox and I will gladly salute and accept any directive from the county commissioners and the school board to do otherwise, um, but we we had to make a very difficult choice between our continually increasing pupil teacher ratios in grades six through twelve and classified employees, some of whom are not even earning subsistence wage. And um, we don't, we don't take pleasure in being put in that position, um, but unfortunately, if these will be the parameters within which we have to live, then we think we ethically must try to get our classified employees, our loyal and and dedicated and capable classified employees, up to at least subsistence wage. Um, and then, hopefully, if we can maintain forty percent of the full growth rates every year, then in time, we can start getting additional locally funded, full-time equivalent teachers back into the budget. We won't be able to solve that all in one year, we'd like to chip away at it, and you can see the last dollars that we recommended here, the last seventy thousand dollars that we recommended was just that, one of those seven, eight-
One of the eight.
One of the eight teachers for grades four and five. If you recall Tim Locklear's presentation on staffing that he gave previously, in order to get back to two thousand sixteen in grade uh pupil teacher ratios, two thousand sixteen pupil teacher ratios in grades four through twelve, and Tim, I'm gonna let you correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we need twenty one.
Total of twenty one full-time equivalent positions?
That's for the presentation, you can write here if you're sorry.
Right, that's correct.
And so we need twenty one, and he wanted to target the first eight, his recommendation was to target the first eight at grade, at our youngest students, and then build up from there. So we know we need twenty one to get back to our two thousand sixteen level, we're willing to go with eight, but even within there, we are restricting ourselves, we are being disciplined in sticking to the county's own parameters. Two percent projections on revenue growth, forty, a policy which states a limitation, a cap of forty percent to the schools, willing to do more than that, but we are respecting the county commissioners and the county staff's projections and their policy, and staying within those parameters. And we'll leave that with you all to judge.
Well, even if we went back to the twenty sixteen ratios, or the twenty sixteen number of teachers, that does not reduce our class sizes overwhelmingly, because we've gained students. Our our ADM is higher now than it was in twenty sixteen, so-
Well, actually, Madam Chair, if I might, uh twenty one would allow for the growth since that time, if I remember Tim's presentation correctly, it would allow for that uh that we have, because we actually didn't cut that many in two thousand sixteen. So that's a number, it's a little bit higher than what we cut at that time. Is that reasonable?
It was based on, that was, that was a presentation that in January two thousand nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty one, um, and that was based on bringing it down to the ratios that we funded teachers on in two thousand sixteen.
So I I hope everybody was able to hear that in in the microphone, but Mr. Lock, Doc Locklear said that that was a two thousand nineteen presentation, so it may be a little bit low, but it is a big number. Uh, you know, okay, let, I I I can be accused of being conservative on this, um, but nevertheless, it's a number that's beyond what Mr. Cox and I were able to figure out how to put in this jigsaw puzzle called the proposed superintendent's budget.
Well, and a note, based on what we heard from our uh teaching, the the advisory committee, the teacher, the uh support personnel, the, everybody wants the the certified staff, or classified staffs, excuse me, to experience growth in their reimbursement. And I think teachers are willing to stay in the classroom with larger class sizes, if that will make it happen.
We have to remember, too, now the General Assembly and Statutory Court are responsible for paying for our teachers, and they're not doing it.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
And that is why it's on our legislative agenda.
Again, these are local costs, this is the cost for the locally funded positions under the current state allotment formula, which is all the staff is authorized to do. Shall we continue, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Mr. Cox?
Rest of the bad news.
So the actual budget request here, this this is just a similar chart to the one before, shows what we will be able to cover, which is the fixed costs, and we'll be able to implement the classified salary schedule, and one of those eight teachers, that's why there were two categories, um, uh, of teachers going back in grades four or five for class size, because we weren't able to do eight, we were able to do one of the eight, um, along with the classified salary schedule, um, to get the difference between the fixed cost of two million and the two million nine hundred and seventy six thousand that we're projecting from the uh county revenues. Again, this is just, eh, to be respectful of the county commissioners, their forty percent resolution, the commitment to us, trying to stay, keep our requests within So what you see here is historical funding um from the county over the last few years. When they passed the resolution back in two thousand sixteen, um, you see they gave us the forty percent, as Dr. Grimacy has already mentioned, um, a couple of years, they gave us more than forty percent, which was um one-time funding, which we did not uh retain. And this current year, you see, we were funded at thirty seven point five percent of budgeted sales tax and property tax revenues. See, for the twenty twenty one uh school year, we're requesting that forty percent of anticipated uh property tax and sales tax revenues, which bring the total uh county request to thirty five million, five hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Of that, thirty four million would be for operations, and I'll go into that a little more, seven hundred and fifty thousand for digital learning, and seven hundred and fifty thousand for capital, as indicated there in the note. So how that allotment from the county would be broken out, which is kinda what I just mentioned a little bit ago, are uh local expense for more county schools, money that more county schools would be able to use, would be thirty one million, two hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. That's part of the thirty four million I mentioned just a minute ago on the previous slide. Of that thirty four million, two point eight million of that local expense will go to the charter schools. And then, as I said before, seven hundred and fifty thousand to capital outlay, and seven hundred and fifty thousand to our digital learning fund, um, that you heard a little bit about earlier, uh, for a total request of thirty five million, five hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Fund two also has a little additional money, uh, or we have a little additional revenue there, as you see, the county appropriation, which includes that two point eight million for charter schools, is thirty four million, sixty five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. We also get fines and forfeitures from the county judicial system, uh, which we anticipate around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we also earn interest um on monies that we have uh for thirty thousand dollars, which make up a total local fund, or fund two, as we refer to as local fund, um, budget of thirty more, thirty four million, five hundred and forty five thousand, and five hundred and fifteen dollars. So this is a total proposed, uh, superintendent's proposed request um budget for more county schools. You see, anticipated uh state funding is eighty one million, five hundred thousand dollars. We just went over the local fund of thirty four million, five hundred and forty five thousand, five hundred and fifteen. Federal fund, which is our fund three, at seven point two million dollars. Our capital expense, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fund four. Our school nutrition of five million, four hundred and eighty five thousand. And then our local operations are fund eight, um, at three million dollars, which is a total proposed budget of one hundred and thirty two million, four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Before we progress, sir, just where is digital among the funds?
Digital um is not shown here, because that is a separate fund that the county maintains, and we submit that uh to the county, and they pay that um themselves. It's not shown here uh in this uh request.
And clarify one more time for the record, fund eight.
Fund eight are things that um, special grants that we get, that we apply for individually, or programs that we have that a charter school may not have, um, such as ROTC, it also includes our Medicaid reimbursements, um, our impact aid for our military families and things like that.
That are based only on the numbers of our own children, or our own, our own military-connected children, or our own children that are Medicaid eligible.
Correct, yes.
There are no charter school children included in those reimbursements. If they want those reimbursements, they have to come up with their own means by which to recapture, which they are eligible to do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cox, I just caught this, and maybe I'm I'm missing something. In slide eleven, where you have the proposed twenty twenty one county allotment, the total is thirty five million, five hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. And then the proposed revenue, it on slide twelve, is thirty four million. So that means that, where's that million dollars?
So that, that is the million dollars, it's actually one point five million-
Okay.
Um, seven hundred and fifty thousand-
Ah, okay.
-for the digital fund-
Gotcha.
And seven hundred and fifty thousand, it'll go in fund four, not fund two-
Okay.
-for a capital outlay.
Thank you, I I knew something was missing somewhere, and I just didn't get-
Yep. So, uh, with the proposed budget, um, some of the shortcomings, some of the things we will not be able to accomplish, this proposed budget fails to reduce class sizes in grades four through twelve. Um, as you mentioned, we're not able to put those teachers back in those grades. It fails to move counselors, nurses, and psychologists from bridge funding, that, as we mentioned, it will require uh future cuts, um, if they're not funding. It fails to provide adequate tech support that we need for our schools in our district. And it also fails to provide funding for the operations and HR director position.
And that rep, and that represents a gamble on our part. Our hope is, is that by the end of the year, there'll be a variety of funds throughout the budget from which we can cobble together enough funds to pay for that position, and any shortcomings that we have would have to come from our cash balance, which isn't intended to support purposes of that nature. So you you all know enough about the cash balance to understand that when we get to that point, the engine is burning red hot, and we really can't drop below that point. But this position is so necessary right now while we're building these schools, and in the future, for this school district's capacity uh to be able to recruit and retain employees, with one thousand eight hundred employees, uh, you had a study that was six years ago, that told you that we were understaffed in the administrative support we had for one thousand eight hundred employees' basic personnel needs. So it's our desire that as Mr. Bowie's role in supporting Mr. Brath during construction begins to wane, assuming there aren't any more major construction projects after Pinehurst Elementary, we're hoping to uh transition that position over to HR, where we will have some federal funds that we can use, reduce the cost of that position, but also add value to this school district's ability to support one thousand eight hundred employees. And so that's why that position, I wanna make sure that nobody thinks that this is an additional cost, this is a position that we absolutely need, this has been acknowledged, that that the amount of work we're doing, the fact that we did not go out and hire additional staff, like other entities have, when they've had much less construction, they've added more staff than we have. Um, we tried that, and we recognized last year, we we couldn't do that. Mr. Bowie was available, because we were consolidating the schools, and it was a perfect time that he was available. So I don't mind saying, this is exactly what this position is about, and is one that we just cannot take lightly, given all the other major needs we have, we can't take this one lightly simply because it's a district-level position. Mr. Cox?
So on the positive, what the budget will be able to accomplish, um, we will be able to implement the classified salary schedule to bring up um the classified staff closer to a living wage. Um, it does provide funding to maintain current operations and current services, which are fixed costs that we showed. And based on the county's uh forty percent resolution and their projections, um, it will not require a tax increase by the county commissioners.
We have restricted ourselves to revenue growth based on the existing tax rates. And so it is, it is our effort, it has been our intention to put forth to you a request that under no circumstances puts any pressure on the county to raise taxes, that's been our intention. It remains to be evaluated by the county staff and by the county commissioners, and we 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 respect their judgment, but we have been diligent in attempting to stay within that parameter.
You know, I would almost add one more accomplishment to this, in that we did not appropriate any funds from fund balance onto this budget. Um, I don't know, I mean, I know when we all started in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, um, we appropriated, you know, over three million dollars, wasn't it about three and a half million dollars out of our fund balance to be able to pay for regular operations, and the fact that we've been able to reduce our budget over the past five years, I think is a um, is something that's important, that we're no longer going for our uh fund balance. Um, we've done that by getting rid of the old year round, we have eliminated um fifteen positions, we no longer have Spanish Immersions, there have been some cuts that we have taken over the past five years to come to a position where we're no longer borrowing or taking from our our fund balance, and it is an accomplishment, even though it's not one that we send up the balloons for, um, but I think it's important that we recognize that, that we have a balanced budget, and that this is one um- and that this is one that is based on what are, what we know we can spend. So I would just add that to a list of accomplishments.
My comment, I think we have to be careful when we talk about fund balance. I mean, we were really going to keep $2 million because of the way we were paid on things.
Well, this is an appropriated fund balance. That's different. The $2 million is not appropriated. It is kept in abeyance, right? But we physically appropriated money into operations, daily operations, when we started on this board five years ago. And I just, you know, and that was because of the state, because of the recession. You know, that was the way the funding was, and the state funding levels never came up to where we had expected them to be. So I just think that's, you know, again, it's an accomplishment. Not one to send the parade in, but it is important to note the work that we have done up to now to reduce so that we have a balanced budget.
So what are the next steps? On March 9, at Carthage Elementary, it will be a public hearing where the public can give feedback to the board based on the superintendent's proposed budget. That's at 6:30. On April 13, based on the feedback from that public hearing, you will adopt your budget. We'll take the feedback that you give us. We'll refine anything in this budget that you would like for us to refine. And then you will take action on that budget to adopt your budget on April 13. This is the superintendent's budget, then you'll adopt yours on April 13. On April 15 or April 20, the commissioners, or, yeah, the commissioners have not given us a firm date. There are two tentative dates. One of the two dates, we will present your budget to the county commissioners. One of those two dates. On May 5, the county manager will present his recommended budget to the county commissioners, similar to what we're doing today with Dr. Grimace presenting his proposed budget to you guys. And then on May 19, they plan to hold a public hearing on the county manager's proposed budget to the commissioners, which is different than in past, well, different than last year, where they did everything, public hearing and approve the budget in late June. It's on June 2 or the 16th. Again, these are tentative. They haven't confirmed which one it will be at this point. That's when the county commissioners will take action and approve their budget. So after the April, or after the May 5 date, we will have a better idea of knowing what the county manager will recommend, funding levels that we'll have to be able to plan for accordingly.
Madam Chairman, in closing, I want to affirm, Mr. Cox and I are together on what we perceive as the shortcomings and accomplishments of this budget with an asterisk on behalf of Ms. Wallen-Miller. I'm still wondering if it's an accomplishment or a basic standard that we should meet. I don't use fund balance, but I appreciate her remarks. I want to make sure that we understand that if we do not get 2.05 million dollars to cover our fixed costs, we will be back with you with cost reductions, that we will be actually cutting costs. We will remind you that 85% of your current budget right now is in personnel, and it is nearly impossible to cut this budget without cutting personnel in the event that we have 2.05 million in fixed costs that are not covered by some revenue source. And so on that somber note, we'll go to the last slide and invite any questions or feedback that the board would like to offer going into next week's budget hearing.
We have a technology, what you said, we have a technology account separate from our main account, correct? Is that kind of how?
The county has a digital fund, $750,000.
Okay, is there, and I know we've talked about this tons of times, and I probably bring it up too much, too. But if we had a separate account for charter schools, how much would that save us for our money?
It wouldn't save us anything. One way or another, the 2.8 million dollars goes to the charters.
I'm talking about local funds, because.
That's correct. This is all local expense. Actually, the price tag for running the charters is much higher, much greater than 2.8 million dollars. 2.8 million dollars is what must be shown in our budget. In the past, when we have offered to set up a separate charter school fund, our intention with that was merely transparency. At no time have we ever thought we would save money that way, unless the county commissioners funded that separately. So if they took on the cost of the 2.8 million in its entirety, then that would be an additional 2.8 million that we would have available for our students. But to set up a separate fund without adding any money to it, it doesn't matter whether it's on our books or on the county's books. We just, we just have attempted, over time, to recognize the fact that there are means by which the responsibility that we have to pass on the local expense per pupil to the charters has the effect of pulling money away from what we pay our students. And we have sought for years to get the county to fund the charters separately. So Ms. Caldwell, to answer, there's two ways to answer your question. If that, if there was a separate fund set up for the local expense per child for charters, and there was an additional 2.8 million put into that fund, then that would, that money would go to the charters, and we'd hold on to the 2.8 million per year. And then that way, we would have our money without the charters losing anything. But right now, to set up a separate fund, all it would do is move the money from our books to the county's books.
But aren't we losing money when there's kids that aren't even coming into our county? I mean, into our schools.
We've shown that in the past. And we do, in effect, what ends up happening is, is that the money follows the children. But we've shown in great detail in previous presentations how that has an effect when our numbers are growing and we don't have a decline.
Right.
All right, so our numbers grow. We're not getting that amount per pupil. The charters need their money.
Right, I agree with that.
They have to pay teachers, they've got to have supplies, they've got to pay their utility bills. Nobody has ever, neither I or any member of this staff has ever suggested that we take money away from the charters.
Right.
We still adhere to the fact, though, as we have shown time and time and time again, that the method of funding as it now stands actually creates a situation where we end up losing money that we need for our existing children. And without repeating the whole presentation, that's the case. But I want to discriminate that between the fact that it's not just a matter of whose books it's on. That doesn't, that doesn't change the formula one way or another, okay?
I would just be happy if they would take the charter of school funds out of the 40% they're giving us. In other words, we get our 40% and whatever charter school is goes on top of that.
That would be an option that would benefit us without hurting the charters. In fact, it would benefit the charters because if that were done, then that would increase the local expense per pupil, and it would increase the amount that goes to the charters. In that case, Mr. Dennison, that would be an argument that says it's win-win, as long as, of course, it doesn't raise the tax rate and, you know, create a problem for the taxpayers, which could perhaps be accomplished at some point in the future within the growth rate if it's robust enough.
I've, excuse me, spoken with directors at two of the three charter schools in the county and with the understanding that it is a win-win situation. When our budget is fully funded, then more money passes through to our charter school students. And I think that the understanding is beginning to come through. Would it be easier if we didn't even have to pass it through? If it just went straight from the county to the charter schools? Well, yes. But until that happens, then we will be good stewards of that money, and we will send it right on through.
Yes, ma'am, we will. It's never been our intention to do otherwise.
All right, more questions for?
No questions.
Mr. Cox or Dr. Grimace?
I'm still concerned about teacher numbers. And, you know, and we want our classified staff taking care of it as well. So we're just going to have to, have to see what we can do with this.
Madam Chairman, there could be a lot of fair criticisms of what we've offered, but we hope that what we've come down on the side this year is the side of recognizing the county's own projections, the county's own budget policy, the desire not to raise taxes. And we've come down on that side. And we've tried different approaches in the past. We're just trying a different approach this year. But we certainly yield to the board's judgment as you move towards your own budget a month from now after the next week's public hearing. If I could, just remind the public that the budget hearing will be part of our meeting, which will be conducted at Carthage Elementary School next week. Same start times. For individuals that want to speak up, speak during, with respect to the budget, during the budget hearing, same parameters as always. Please sign up by 6:15 at the latest.
Well, I certainly hope we'll hear from our public at that time, and that the commissioners might hear from them as well when the budget is passed on. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, that completes the administration's reports and recommendations.
All right.